All right, good morning ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Lexington's Planning Commission Meeting. This is a normal monthly meeting and is being held at 8:00 AM Wednesday, January 23rd, 2019. The meeting is being broadcast live and a recording will be aired on the town's informational channel, 1301, several times during the week. I am Keith Ross, your Planning Commission Chair, and I'll ask the other members to please introduce themselves.
Good morning, I'm Frank Berry.
Good morning, Sammy Hendrick.
Morning, Roscoe Kaufman.
Good morning, Jarrett Harrelson.
Good morning, I'm Jamie Feig.
Good morning, I'm Brooke Poole, Town Administrator.
Good morning, I'm Kathy Manas, Town Council.
Good morning, I'm Brad Cunningham, Town Attorney.
Hi, Dan Walker, Director of Parks and Safety.
Good morning, Charlie Thomas, District Commissioner.
Bruce Rieser, Planning Committee.
Randy Edwards, Director of Transportation.
Good morning, Tom Hanson, Director of Planning.
Good morning, Esther Liederman, Assistant Development Administrator.
Now Karen Hunter, the Assistant Municipal attorney.
I think we have almost all of town here this morning. That's good. All right, at this point I'll ask Commissioner Berry if he will lead us in an invocation.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this new day. Thank you for the world we live in today. As we are through these trying times in our country, please be with those who serve and protect us every day. Be with his body as we plan the future of the town. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. All right, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time I'll call the meeting to order. I don't think we have any deletions from the agenda this morning or any changes. All right, first item of business is approval of minutes from December 19th, 2018 meeting. Have you received those in your packets? Are there corrections?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion. Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you very much. All right, first item of new business is approval of plan development unit consisting of an age-restricted complex and a small hair salon. John?
Good morning.
Good morning.
PLCW Trust and Terry Wayne Watt Trust are requesting site plan approval for a planned development consisting of a 43-unit senior apartment complex with a small hair salon. The project will be located on 2.94 acres between Citizens Drive and North Point Drive. Access to the development will be available on both of these roads. The project is requesting approval under the planned unit development rules to allow variances in the traditional zoning requirements for multifamily developments. Project differs from the multifamily requirements in the following ways. Parking is reduced from 86 spaces to 54 spaces. Buffers are reduced from 100 feet to as little as 15 feet on some sides. Setbacks are reduced from 150 feet to 45 feet and density is increased from 11 units per acre to 14.6 units per acre. The developers are here to answer any questions if you have any on this project.
All right, anybody have any questions of Mr. Hanson?
Keith?
Yes?
About the sidewalk, is that in?
Yeah, I was going, if the developers here, they want to come forward and do a kind of quick presentation for the record, that would be great. I know we discussed it at our work session on Monday evening, but for the benefit of those watching and who will be watching, if you want to come forward and do a quick presentation of your project, that'd be great.
Good morning.
Thank you.
I'm Tim Harris, I'm with ASI Engineers, the civil engineer for the project. This is Chris Whitner with the developer. Again, I think most of you were at the workshop yesterday and for those that weren't, we'll just sort of go over this real quickly again.
Can you still hear me?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Talk a little louder. North Lake Road here, this is Citizens Drive, an existing road, and this is North Point Drive here. There's a Ovalo Citizen Bank here, there's a Rivers &amp; Wings Place here, a Mexican restaurant here that helps you get organized a little bit. This is sort of an unusual lot because the way it's positioned with the long road coming here with Citizens Drive and this little syrup coming through here, there's very little visibility to this. And because of this, with the present commercial zoning, a lot of people have looked at this. I think it's been on the market something like 15 years and it's just never worked for anybody because it's so hard to see it with the large buildings here, here and here, some residences along here. You just really can't see that it's there. That doesn't work for most commercial projects. Works fine for apartment house. Our people know where they're going, so they don't have any trouble. So, we felt like it was a good location. Unfortunately, with the strict zoning that the town has on hold to family with the large buffers and setbacks, it's virtually an unbuildable lot for that reason. And so, we came in and talked to this market several times and some other staff and came up with the idea of doing a planned development district. Some of, yeah, again, the main reason is to try to alleviate the problems with the buffers and setbacks. That just basically made the lot totally unbuildable, so we wanted to do that. Because the project is seniors only, are also requesting reduction in parking. Just wanted to, I didn't want to talk over. We've submitted some studies on about 25 or so with this type of properties all over the southeast and came up with an average of 1.1 spaces per unit. We're asking for 1.25. And other than that, I think we're pretty much, like I say, with the setbacks, the buffers, we are asking for a little bit of an increase in density to make the product project financially feasible. During the workshop, there was some discussions about trying to make this a little more pedestrian friendly and they're not showing on the colored one, but we've added a sidewalk to connect to an existing sidewalk over here on North Lake Road. And we're also bringing the sidewalk back now here to North Point Road. Unfortunately, from here back towards North Lake, there isn't an existing sidewalk and it was mentioned yesterday about that. I went and took another quick look at it this morning and there's about a four-foot bank there, so I don't think, without some type of retaining wall, it'd be pretty hard to put one there, but it does give them the opportunity to get across the street and over to, I think there's a theater and some other things over there. I don't know if I have a whole lot to ask other members. Do you have any questions?
All right, any questions of the developer? One, just one clarification point. And we talked a good bit Monday evening and part of your request for the planned unit development is to add a hair salon, I think is at least the expectation at this point. I'm assuming whatever goes there, whether it's a hair salon or some other type of small business, will be solely for the support of the residents that live there, is that correct?
Well, we had proposed that. We really don't have a problem with it, you know, for the public as well. I really, whatever commission and council prefers, either way, it's fine with us.
Well, I think from a preference standpoint, I'm not sure somebody from the public couldn't walk in, but if you open something that would serve the public in general, then we get back to a parking issue was our concern, is if it's not solely for the support of these residents, you get into a parking concern.
Well, we would prefer it to be solely for the residents if that's not considered detrimental. I think it would be probably 95% that way anyway.
Well, I assume so, but I mean, if that business failed and there's a commercial piece there, it could be open to any type of development at that point.
And the preference is more from a security standpoint. That is a car access building, so if somebody from outside was to come in, they would have to be given some type of a temporary code and it would just sort of make things a little more complicated. So, we would prefer to have residents only.
Understood. All right, any additional questions?
I have one that was asked the other night on the stormwater. Is that retention, detention is strictly, how to, is it retaining everything?
We don't do, we haven't done the full engineering on this, but just based on, I mean, it won't retain everything, it'll certainly meet whatever the town ordinance requires. It'll certainly reduce it to less than what it is now. But no, we haven't done the full engineering on it yet. We started a little early in the game for that. We've got to see if we've got a project first.
Yeah, but I mean, you, does it, you have an exit out of that?
Yeah, there's existing ditch along that, along that side.
Any other questions? John, is there anyone here to speak to this item other than the developer? Okay, all right. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have a motion?
I move approval. Second.
All right. Motion, approval. Yes, sir.
Motion needs to be approved, pending final annexation appropriate zone.
I agree.
All right. All right, so we have a motion and a second.
Do you need to amend that motion?
No.
He's all right. We're good. All right, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, gentlemen. All right, next item is annexation of said property. John?
Again, this is 2.94 acres located on Citizens Drive behind 919 North Lake Drive. They petition to annex the property with the 43-unit age-restricted apartment facility being planned on the site. Property's in town near this one, is owned general commercial and high-density residential. Citizens Drive is classified as a collector road. For the intended use of the property, to be compliant with the zoning requirements, the property will need to be annexed with high-density residential with a planned unit special overlay.
All right, any discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval, annexation.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Item three of new business, John, is rezoning a portion of property at 4800 block of Augusta Road.
Wilson Shealy LLC is requesting to rezone a portion of the parcel located adjacent to 4863 Augusta Road. The entire 61-acre property is currently owned general commercial. The app comes requesting rezone 50.7 acres to protected residential two to accommodate a new 225-unit subdivision being planned by Mungo Homes. That's the next item on the agenda.
All right.
I know Mr. Dixon is here to speak to any questions you may have on this project.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dixon, if you'll come forward. And I know the item three and four are linked from a site plan approval and I didn't want to just take up a large discussion of rezoning without giving you some opportunity to discuss some of the changes and amendments that you've made to the site plan from the last time we saw it.
Sure.
Because our recommendation at that point was to stay commercial, so before we got into that, I wanted to at least give you some time to discuss your changes to the site plan.
Okay, thank you. I've provided the, kind of the original site plan and the revised site plan. And the major change that we made was adding about 14 acres that allowed us to connect to Julie Road with a second entrance for the community. That increased the total number of lots, but it actually decreased our overall density. We increased the amount of open space, increased the amount of active open space, added a swimming pool facility, playground, some other open space for play areas, that sort of thing. And we also addressed some traffic issues that came up in the previous work session by widening the main road through the community, adding some traffic calming devices, which are the circles at those couple of intersections that you see, that were recommended by Randy And something that did not come up at this current work session that we've also discussed with Randy Edwards was a contribution for the signal light rating on US-1 at those two intersections at the entrance ramps to Interstate as well as Julie Road. So, we'll be doing that as well as a right turn deceleration lane into the entrance road off of US-1.
Okay. All right, and as we, I guess, any thoughts you have as to rezoning of the property? And I wanted to kind of give you an opportunity to talk a little bit about that because the first item we're going to take up is the decision on whether to rezone from, as it's listed now as a general commercial to a residential property. Can you give us, I guess, a little bit of justification why you feel that's warranted or appropriate?
Well, in looking at the comprehensive plan, our position on that is that it shows a commercial corridor coming down US-1 and stopping at I-20. If you were to project that same commercial corridor across I-20, it would bisect this property. It would not allow for quite as much residential as we're proposing, but it does bisect the property showing commercial in front and, you know, other uses in the neighborhood. And we think it's appropriate. I know that, you know, y'all have looked at it differently, but we would ask that you consider that for this property because it's, property's been for sale for a long time as commercial. There's no demand for it and we think that residential would do well there.
Okay. All right, are there any questions from the commission members?
I have something to add real quick.
Yes?
My name's Patrick Chambers. I actually work for Wilson Shealy and his family in trying to sell this property. It's been on the market for 15 years and we've had it on the market for four years now probably and have tirelessly attempted to put retail here. And I've heard you guys say that y'all want commercial on this site and I assume that to be retail because an office park or something like that probably is not viable as there's one that's vacant, you know, a mile down the road that hasn't had any traction over the last 12 years either. All the retailers, and I've spoken to representatives of or agents for retailers and worked with them on a daily basis, any retail that comes to this market of any size, of any mass, is going to go to 378. There's still vacant sites on 378 that are not developed yet. And for somebody to come out here and pioneer where there's no other retail around is next to impossible. And that's just coming from my professional experience, so I just wanted to make that point.
All right, thank you. All right, any questions? Yeah, do we have other folks that are here to speak to this item? Yes, sir, if you would please come forward and introduce yourself for the record.
Good morning.
Good morning.
George Mathias. My property is adjacent to this tract and I have no problems with the potential of what they, what they want to do. But I had one gentleman that's been on my property that said he was interested and he walked it and I had mentioned something about the Shealy tract and he said, "Well, I've got somebody interested in your property, some heavy equipment people that would like to take a look at it." Well, he was actually showing it or looking at it and then going back to them. But the property, they've got the 65 acres, of course, it's been, it's been on the market for quite a while, right, sir? Yeah. And I'm not so sure if the reasons that Highway 1 seems to be a little slower than some other areas, I think particularly when you compare Sunset Boulevard now. Of course, I'd like to move my property to Sunset Boulevard. I think I could sell, sell my 15 acres, but I have no problem with it, but it's just that, it's, I don't know, it's kind of a questionable of why it's, why it has been unsold for all these years. Now, I think if you, of course, you could relate it, some of that could be recession, but that's about it. I just, you know, I've been here all my life and I'm not so sure if it's retail or if it's commercial. I just don't know what the, what the reason why it can't be, why it's not sold yet. And I'd like to also mention that mine's available as well and probably for less than half the cost. So, you probably can save some extra money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Yes, Mike Housman. Just have a question on the stormwater drainage off of that property. Doesn't look like any, on just the quick sketch up there, that I didn't see any ponds and et cetera, so it looks like it goes under one and underneath one over to the other side of the Highway 1?
In the drawing that we have, at least preliminary, there are two ponds on-site to capture stormwater. And that's something that would be worked through in conjunction with the county through Stormwater Office to make sure that whatever they did, one, we're able to handle the amount of stormwater that they generated, but also make sure that it discharged it to the appropriate location.
Okay, so that's not, not complete yet and that would be?
I don't think the final drawing is complete yet, no.
Okay, and nothing would be approved until that, that was, comes back to the committee or?
No, what we are looking to do is a sketch plan approval. The staff would be addressing the final, would the final come back to us, John? It normally doesn't, so that would be done at staff level along with the county for the stormwater.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else that wishes to speak to this? All right, questions or comments from the commission?
I'd like to make a motion not to change the zoning and keep it general commercial.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, and that is a recommendation that will go to council, so that will transfer over to their agenda. We still need to, I think, address business item number four, John, the sketch plan.
Yes, sir. I believe, without going back over the site plan that Mr. Dixon has already described to you, I think for record-keeping purposes, based on your recommendation, the site plan would need to be denied at this point.
All right, any discussion?
We need to make a motion.
Do we need a motion?
So move.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion for denial of the sketch plan. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Next item five, John, is annexation of property on 209B Parker Street.
IBW Local Union 772 owns .37 acres located at 209B Parker Street and has petition to annex the property. A meeting office is located on the site. Property's in town near this one or is owned protected residential and high-density residential. Parker Street is classified as a local road. Due to the surrounding conditions and the character of the general area, the recommended zoning for this parcel is protected residential. The recommended classification Parker Street is a local road. Everything around this property is protected residential.
Yes, it is, and thank you. I do have one question and I've kind of touched on this a little bit the other night. The lot behind it that we annexed, I think, the month before last, end of last year, the residential, that seems to be using a driveway that cuts through the middle of this property and their house is built with rubbery so much on the property and I'm not sure they have that, have room for a driveway. Is that going to create a, an issue in the future from an access standpoint to the residential?
That would have been something to ask the county before they approved a plat amendment for these parcels.
Okay, so this has been split?
It's been split, yes, sir.
Okay, it just looks like the way they've drawn it, they've pretty much eliminated any driveway to access this property without going through the IBW lot. So, okay, I just want to, I just want to make sure. All right, do we have any other questions? All right, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion. Second.
Second.
All right, thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, item six is annexation of property in Sterling Bridge subdivision, John.
Old Cherokee Investors owns 19.3 acres located at the rear of Sterling Bridge subdivision and has petition to annex the property. Faces four and five of the subdivision with 53 additional lots are planned on the site. Property's in town near this one or is owned protected residential two. Due to surrounding conditions and the use of the property, the same zoning classification recommended for this parcel.
All right. All right, and so these, this one plus the next one are the final two pieces to this subdivision, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, do we have anybody here from the developer?
The developer left after item four.
So, okay, I got, I got some significant questions regarding access, so I'm not sure. I guess my concern, I'm unsure moving forward without questions on how you're going to access or provide multiple accesses to a neighborhood that's going to be 230, 25, 30 units and we're requiring two access points for those sized neighborhoods.
County's land disturbance ordinance requires two accesses for over 200 lots.
All right, so since he left, I'm trying to figure out how we, how we address the access issue.
Can you approve pending?
Or can we, can we ask this to come back next month? Do you have any idea of how pressing this issue is?
I don't think it's terribly pressing.
Since he left, I'm going to assume it's not urgent.
But I don't, I don't want to say definitively.
Yeah, I understand.
But I know that. They're working, they're working, putting infrastructure in at Phase Three now, but they haven't started building any housing, so I don't think it would be.
Is this a, is this a time-sensitive issue?
I believe you'd have 60 days.
Okay.
For an annexation?
Staff, the term.
The site plan's already approved.
I'm sorry, he's correct.
30 days?
60.
Oh, we have 60 days?
No.
30. Okay, so we need a motion.
There's not a term in this one.
Oh, there's not a time limit?
On annexations. All we're doing is annexing.
It's just the annexation.
Okay.
Yes, not a.
So.
Has it been approved in the county already?
Site plan has been approved.
This is annexation.
Once.
But they get approval of over 200 lots with one access.
Yeah, they, they do a zoning approval and then they send it to Public Works for land disturbance and that's where the access issue would be addressed with, with the county.
So, they haven't pulled the land disturbance permit for this.
They haven't done it because they're doing it in faith. They do. They haven't done it, because they're doing it, they do it in phases.
So, I mean, it appears that they have a potential tentative solution back, on the backside. What was the name of that road, John?
Woodbridge.
Woodbridge, back through there, but I don't know that that's been confirmed.
Mr. Chairman, I just moved you to delay it then.
We have too many unanswered questions.
All right. So, Mr. Hendricks, I guess, has a motion to table this until next month?
Would that be item six and seven, Mr. Hendricks?
Correct. Yes, item six and seven until next month.
Is four, okay. Will it cross the threshold?
Yes, yes. I would put it across the threshold since we're dealing with those now, so. All right. So, motion to table items?
Six.
Six and seven. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. And I assume it's okay to do both of those as one motion. Mr. Attorney? I assume it's okay to do both of those as one motion since they're related? Okay. All right. All right. Item number eight is amendment to land development ordinance for dumpster paths, John.
Item number nine.
I'm sorry. No, that's not right.
No, it's eight. No, you're right.
No dumpster paths, I'm sorry. Skip one. Like she wants to get out.
Go ahead.
Section 154.06.18 of the land development ordinance requires dumpster paths to be tied to the sanitary sewer system with a drainage system. The treatment plant no longer accepts this type of effluent, making it necessary to amend this ordinance. Staff proposal is to amend the ordinance so that it requires dumpster pad drains to include an approved filtering system and then drain into the stormwater system.
All right. I don't see Alan here this morning, but I guess my, my one question, Rosemary's going to answer this one. What, how do we address maintenance of these filtering-type devices so that they don't become malfunctioning and we have rather nasty water going through our stormwater system?
We do have a grease...
Please come forward. John sat you up for this, you know.
I know, I know. We do have a grease trap program, and if we find where it's necessary, we can just roll it into that. It's the same sort of thing. It's a sand filter.
Okay.
So we can just, you know, roll it into that and have the guys check, because usually when they have a dumpster pad, it's usually restaurants, something like that, so they're already there anyway, so it's really not going to be that big a deal.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I just wanted, I wanted to ask that question. Thank you. All right. Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Now, we can do item nine, amendment to the zoning ordinance for required parking spaces.
About once a year, we have to pick on Rosemary. Section 155.03.08 of the zoning ordinance allows up to 33% of the required parking spaces in a commercial development to be designated as compact spaces. These spaces are two feet narrower than a standard parking space. Oftentimes, a large number of compact spaces may go unused and has caused some complaints in certain developments. After discussing this issue during the work session last month, it was proposed to limit the allowable number of compact spaces to no more than 10% of the required parking spaces.
All right. And I think after discussion Monday night, some thought, thought 10 might have been still generous. So, any discussion or questions? All right. Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. All right. And that concludes our business items for this morning's meeting. Do we have any traffic update, Vice Chairman?
Nothing of any big. We opened up phase one, the bid for the second phase of adaptive, so they'll be going to work soon.
Is that already, though, what they've been doing with the undergrounds on Highway One, I mean, 378?
There's three different groups that are out there undergrounding stuff. So some of it's telecom and other things.
So where's this next phase?
Well, so, everything out on the I-20, 378 area is adaptive, and you can tell by where the mast arms are. And then, kind of from that till you get to downtown, that was the area where we needed to acquire right away before we could do it, so that's the bulk of the signals that are, that are the next phase, though there's some here, there, and everywhere. It's essentially everything that wasn't part of that first phase that's in town. So where there aren't, where there aren't mast arms, for the most part, is a good indication of that there's not adaptive there.
All right. Sounds great.
How long was the opening bid process?
I believe it was, was it 60 days or 30 days, the bid?
It's a 30-day.
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 Yeah.
You want to speak about the, did we want to say something about the turn lane at the Chick-fil-A? Why the trees, there's been a lot of questions, why those trees were cut down?
Well, the workout, so the question is the work that's happening on Jenny Lane, and there's a...
No, no, no. At the Walmart in front of, remodeled Chick-fil-A.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, well, it's almost the same answer. So that the Chick-fil-A in front of the Walmart, they are, you saw some work going on with retaining walls, and they removed some of the trees in front of the store, and that's because part of the development requirement for that site, or I should say redevelopment requirement, is that they're having to put in a right-hand decel and turn lane into that shopping center, so therefore the need to use some of that property where those trees were located. So it should significantly help the operation of that signal.
And, and I think it's worth providing a kudos to that property owner, because he, I understand, he has been very willing to assist the town with some traffic issues at that intersection.
Chick-fil-A Corporate is very easy to work with in development. They, they understand that they have a big impact, and they, they do what they need to, what they're asked to, to help mitigate that.
Do you have a time frame with Jingle Lane?
About here.
Able?
All right. So that's it for traffic. Any other updates from the commission? All right. Stu, or, Stu, Britt, anything from town?
No, sir.
Councilwoman Manus, how are you?
I'm good.
Good to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad to be here, and as always, thank you to this commission for what you do and how you look out for the citizens in the town Lexington. So, thank you. Have a couple of announcements. We got the Fourth Annual Lexington County Chili Cookoff. It's going to be this Sunday from 12 o'clock to 5 o'clock at the Ice House Amphitheater, and the admission is $10, and you can get your tickets at Blowfish on Main online, and there'll be some that morning if you want to buy them. So you have an opportunity to get some good chili on Sunday. Also, our mayor, Steve McDougall, will be doing the State of the Town address. That will be at our February the 4th council meeting, starting at 6:30. We'd like to invite everyone to come. If not, you can watch us on television at channel 1301 on, on cable. He will address topics such as the Ice House Amphitheater, the One Way Pairs, our transportation projects, and along with the council's goals for 2019, to make Lexington a place where citizens want to live, work, play, and learn. So please take time to hear the mayor in his State of the Town address. The Lexington County Museum Gala will be held on Saturday, February the 6th, here at Town Hall, and this year's theme is Letters from Veterans. So the money that they raise will be used to help replace the roof on the 1850 Gin House and the enhancement of the exhibits at the museum. So you can go to lexingtoncountymuseum.org to purchase tickets there. The town Lexington offices will be closed on Monday, February 18th, for President's Day. So due to the holiday, our February work session will be on Tuesday, February the 19th, at 6 o'clock in the Eli Mack Room, and the solid waste and recycling collection will continue to run on the normal schedule. So again, thank you for what you do, and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Thank you. And hopefully, we won't have to have a work session on a Monday night holiday next time. I do applaud the commission for being willing to do that this past Monday. The, the Ice House has announced their schedule for the next year, is my understanding.
Yes, it's an exciting schedule.[1768.82]